Oh, you, you want?
Police.
Council met in closed session on two items, direction was given and no reportable action was taken.
Great, thank you. Please, Danley, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance, July, United States of America, and to the fellow electors who stand, one nation under God, indivisible, the liberty of each and every man.
Our Father, have we, have we, thank you, Lord, this beautiful day, the day of us, and the opportunity to gather the other, the businesses of this community. Pray for the council members, staff, all the witnesses this evening. And ask the sisters and sisters who made it, that are the best, that are the smart communities. Please, Danley, pray. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Member Daney Uker.
Here.
And O'Grath.
Here.
Mike Hark.
Here.
Mayor Leo Suber.
Here.
Mayor Mike Prestuccia.
Present. Public discussion, if there's anybody in the audience that has something to bring up, if not on the agenda, please come to the podium, if not, we'll address it on the item. Singing nobody. Move on to approval of the minutes, let's take them all, at the same time, we can, special meeting April 4th, regular meeting April 10th, and special meeting April 24th.
So approved.
Now, hold on, I forgot, I need to do this.
Dean?
We need help over here. Please.
Well, I don't care who I get the help from. I'm...
I know you won't.
You guys still trying?
There you go.
I said, I said so.
Just okay. Okay. When the passes approval of the agenda is posted or amended?
I have two items. The consent calendar. I could ask Tricia to tell me what they are. 1.3B and 1.3D.
Okay, so with that, those are moved, do we have approval of the agenda as amended? We have a motion?
Oh, there it is.
A second? And approve. Approval of the consent calendar? As amended? Okay, we'll get back to that again, okay? Okay. 1.3B, donation of a convention tree from Love Rippen to the city of Rippen.
My question is, the staff report said that there was a cost of $1,000 to the city. Is that real cost, or is that an estimate of the time it's gonna take to put it in?
The estimate of the time it's gonna take to put it in. It's our work, our duty, it's about essentially the value of it.
Okay.
The installation.
All right. I was hoping that's what it was.
Is anybody from Love Rippen here? No, no, okay, okay.
So do we do these one at a time, or do we do both? Okay. And for D? Why was the low bid rejected?
Yeah, it was determined that bid was non-responsive. They used the wrong bid schedule. We issued an addendum prior to the project bidding. That addendum included a new bidding, bid schedule. And then contractor, when they submitted their bid, used the previous one, the old, the old bid schedule. And so, there were some items missing.
Okay. And, okay, there were three bids. Why didn't we go to number two?
There was a difference in the cost and our available funds.
So bid number two was more than we could afford. So we're gonna try it again. Okay.
And hopefully they do right this time.
Hopefully. Because that project's been around since before I was on the council. We'll get it some kind?
Before Dan was born. We have a motion, you have a second? Okay. You only had number five on there, you need to put 1.3 on there?
Okay, I got it, okay.
So both of them approved. At the end of the consent calendar, we do have a proclamation. It's Mosquito East Side Action Club, it's the 40th Annual 500 Mile Run. We do have a proclamation from Mr. Ramos, would you mind, please, coming up and accepting the proclamation? So Mr. Ramos, you founded this organization more than 45 years ago. And for those, for those of you who don't know, it provides peer counseling, support, role models, and quality of life for individuals. And when I first read this, I was wondering what it stood for. And it stands for Mayor Sun's Quick Understanding and Stall Trust Over Stubbornness. Whereas the 500 Mile American Indian Spiritual Marathon is why we presented the proclamation. It's an annual run will begin at the national headquarters of the United Farm Workers at La Paz near King, California, and finally end up at headquarters located on French Camp Road in Rippen. Whereas the 500 Mile American Indian Spiritual Marathon is a challenging and stressful event. Members of the community participate with all attention to the benefits of a drug-free lifestyle and the conviction that all life is sacred. We now therefore be resolved, the city council of the city of Rippen takes pride and pleasure in drawing special public attention to the 40th Annual 500 Mile American Indian Spiritual Marathon Run and applauds the marathon participants for their strength and fortitude to participate in such an event and for this inspiration which they provide to others through their example. Thank you so much. If you would like to say?
The shirt, the colors on that shirt represent the four major races in, on earth. White people, yellow people, red people, black people. And our bottom line is all life is sacred. And our two founders of the run, Seth, Seth, and Frank, they're both gone now. Seth and Frank passed away this year. And so this proclamation this year means a whole lot to a lot of people, including myself. I came here 35 years ago, I want to tell you. First white man I met in Rippen, I liked Dean Uker. And he was a good friend of the guy that owned the patio. And I met him on Main Street Day down in Rippen. And we've been friends for a lot of years and we have disagreements. But I think we all have disagreements and the bottom line is we all get past those disagreements. We continue to be productive in our community, for our people. I thank you very much for the proclamation.
Thank you so much, appreciate it, thank you. I met Dean in, I met you then. Okay, 2A, first reading and introduction, ordinance of the city of Rippen, amending chapter 7.16, real property development fees of Rippen Municipal Code.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Phil, Councilor. There's actually, there's two parts related to amendment, I'll go through both of them here. One of them is, the first area that we're looking to amend is, for about the last 10 years, the city has been working with residential developers and we were, we have been collecting our city development fees at time of final of the house, or a little bit, actually a little bit before the final of the house. It was really when the gas tag service inspection would happen, so they could actually install the gas meters. So that's a few weeks before the final. And that was kind of done in an effort to help residential development when we had the recession. So they didn't have much carrying costs for loans. You know, they would have to usually pay their development fees when they pulled the permit. Sometimes it'd take four or five months to build a house and they had all that carrying costs. So that was in an effort to kind of work with developers in that essence. And that was really only for residential development. And now we're trying to actually do the same for all development in town, the non-residential as well. We've been approached by several projects, asking if we could do that. One of them's out there on the road, it's gonna be starting out there, the restaurant. So there's like, there's a lot of carrying costs, the restaurants take about 10 months to build. So, we thought, we did some discussion internally on that. It's actually probably a little bit easier to treat all of the permits the same way. And there's some extra work in doing the deferment, because some fees we do have to collect upfront. But the other ones would be deferred to until the time of a gas tag or final of a building. So that's section one of the amendment. Section two kind of deals with, essentially deals with properties that are annexed into the city of Rippen. We annex property in the city of Rippen, a lot of times we inherit existing buildings. For the most part, those buildings in the past have always been residential homes that have come into the city. And the way we've dealt with those is on a case-by-case basis, that they need to hook up city services, whether their well goes bad or the septic tank goes bad, and they need to hook up city services, which is a requirement of the city of Rippen. And they don't pay any development fees until they have to do such a hook-up or if they're gonna change the use of their property. We, in the past, have always collected water sewer and storm only for the residential developments. But we have really had no policy in place here for existing properties that would come in and are developed non-residentially. So industrial, commercial, professional office type buildings. So we're trying to really nail down some policy decisions of how we would handle some of those properties. Obviously, if they come to us and they want to hook into city water or sewer, it's an easy decision to make. However, some of these properties have quite a few impacts on the city. Naming, naming the transportation with projects that are coming. We do see transportation impacts to the city even before they're annexed to the city. But once they are annexed to the city, when they call the police department, our police department has to respond. They come in for a permit or some other information, they come to city hall at that time once they're annexed. Public Works has to service those projects as far as picking up garbage and other things that they might need to have done. So there is the impacts, obviously, that we are not collecting from those properties if we just collect water sewer and storm. So the first part there is, we really wanted to capture and kind of mimic what we do with residential development. We want to make sure we have in our ordinance that a project, when they do get annexed in the city, a non-residential project, has to pay the water sewer and storm fees when they hook up. There is some language also in sample resolution that kind of mimics the residential one, that if there's some hardship, we would actually kind of more so have a loan process where they could pay those fees over a period of time to help out some of the burden of hooking up some of those services. So in front of you tonight, is this basically mimicking the residential development? But more importantly, I think we wanted to just open up a kind of a policy discussion with the council and see what your desires are for looking at some of the other impacts that we might have with these properties coming into the city of Rippen. So, with that being said, it's quite a bit of information thrown at you, you'd be happy to answer any questions and maybe Tom will weigh in on some of that as well.
I'll just make one comment, I remember when we did this. Do you remember when we did this, years ago? I guess we just forgot about the industrial and commercial, huh?
Predominantly, we've always dealt with this residential. And so, you know, we have some, obviously, we have a couple of projects in the last 10 years that have developed right on the edge of our town. And at some point in time, we'll be coming into the city of Rippen. When they, when they are required or need to hook up services, we just want to know how the council wants us from a policy standpoint to approach this.
I'm gonna let her know. I might want something.
Some of these, the residential projects, if I'm not, can't play this the wrong way, have actually turned into commercial projects. Because it's like, wouldn't a good example be out on the front, at Frontage, what is it, you know, where Burkett?
Yeah, parallel avenue.
Parallel, there you go. Would that, would it have been something that falls into this category?
Those are a little lazier, because when they change use, obviously, they'd be tearing a house down and developing a whole nother building, or buildings on those properties. And then we actually capture the true impacts and the fees at that time when they, when they change the use of property. The ones that we're probably having a little difficulty in making sure what some policy decisions are is when there's actually, the use matches the zone they're in, so they're probably never gonna change use. However, when we annexed in the city, there is impacts that we haven't really collected for. We've accounted for those in our fees, that's helping us make our, collect the fees we need to put the infrastructure in. But when they come in and if we don't capture those fees, then we're kind of slowly falling behind on some of those.
Leo?
I'm confused. Does this ordinance change apply only to property that is annexed to the city?
The second portion of it, yes.
That's where my confusion starts. Describe to me a situation where the first paragraph would apply. How do we have a piece of property in town already that has a residence on it? And no utilities?
A pretty example's right across the street here. We've got properties that are annexed to the city, have their own well and septic, and they can continue to operate on that so long as they don't fail. They don't have to hook up the water sewer upon annexations. They're encouraged to, but we don't require that. So at some point, if their well or septic fails, and they have to hook up. And those are the ones that we would, that's, that's the time we collect.
And what you're saying is, if there happened to be a warehouse sitting on that property, they would be treated the same?
Correct.
Under this ordinance?
Yes.
The other, I'm gonna get to the other one in a minute. The other question I have is, if it's a residence, then they're gonna pay, if they change, if one of those houses over there had enough room, they split the lot. The existing structure falls under this rule. The new structure would have to attach to city services?
Yes.
And what you're gonna do is do that, or make them pay their fees at the time that the gas meter goes in? On the construction?
Yeah.
If it's a commercial building that goes in there, it says they're gonna pay at the point that the gases, unless you decide it's gonna be different. My question is, how come they get treated, they have choices, whereas a residential person doesn't?
Residential person, I think you're actually, there's two, there's two different points here. So the first deferment has nothing really to do with this second point. The deferment of fees is not for somebody who, that was annexed into the city and hooking up.
No, I understand that, it's for the new construction. But if it's a residence that goes in, they're done at the point that the gas meter's running.
Well, the resident could actually fall under the same, they could both fall under the same category. You could start seeing residential properties, much like you're starting seeing some commercial properties that don't put any gas to a house. You're seeing a lot of advances in solar, where you might not even see a gas connection to a house or a commercial building in the future. They might just run everything electric at that point. So they wouldn't be asking for a gas tag.
So when do they pay their fee?
I already get the final. That's where we fall back to the final.
Would they, because in here it says that a commercial could be told to pay at the time they get the building permit?
That basically, Tom, the way he's written it up, leaves out a discretion of the director. So when Pro, when Pro just comes in and asks for the deferment, when we would allow that to happen.
If this stays the same?
Yes.
And it may be intense discretion at the time, that the building permit is the time that he's sure he can fully mitigate the project, as in get all these fees paid. It may not be a gas connection, maybe multi-tenants, we don't know. But we want to have the flexibility in the code to give them that discretion.
The only reason I'm thinking about it is, what I, if there is a complaint from developing people, whether it's an individual or developer, is the fact that things flow all over the place. There's no, in some, it characterizes as not certainty sometimes. This guy gets to do it here, this guy gets to do it there, this guy gets to do it there. And I guess what I'm looking at is, why not have a line? This is the same for everybody. Just ask. There's more, more of the people. Now I want to go to the other part. Which is, you're gonna annex property that has structures on it. If we were gonna annex property that had no structures on it? There's all kinds of fees that they would pay to do that. They complain about it every time. As I read this, that's not mentioned in there. I, in all honesty, when I read that paragraph, when I was done, I thought, I'm gonna build a house on this property, then come into the city, because the only thing I gotta pay is connection fees. I don't think that's right, if that's what it said, that's how I read it.
You're correct, that basically, the housing, the way housing's been handled in the past, and that was the, it was the resolution that was adopted in 1999, was the decision was to discharge water sewer and storm.
And forget the rest.
And they came in. That was the decision that was made at the time. There is impacts, you're right, there is impacts that we end up having in our community that we have collected for.
If you take it for example, like school fees. They paid school fees out in county. So there's some fees that would be duplicative, and some fees that wouldn't. Obviously, the connection charges are related to the flow of utilities, and that's easy. But there's things in the county that pay a transportation fee. It's not as much as they pay at Rippen, it's less. Or there are, there's a fee for law and justice, there's other, they have other kinds of fees. So what we want to avoid is where they say you're charging twice for the same thing. I pay it when I develop my property in county, now you're gonna make me pay it when I come into the city. So what we've said in the ordinance is, the development fees that are set forth in Title 17, which is a broad gamma, not just water sewer and storm, but the whole list that you said they complain about. We would go in and say, okay, what did this project pay when we were out in the county? What would they have paid if they were in the city? And either as a condition of annexation at the time that they come in, or through what the county's been doing with this church project out here, which is a project improvement agreement. It's a agreement between the city and county, and how to mitigate them. We would do that during that process, but then we would identify which of our fees they didn't pay, and make sure it's not doubling up of what they paid in county, and then make sure that we're fully mitigated. It's, I know.
I get it.
Okay.
I get that. I didn't see that when I read it, that's, that's my concern.
Okay, well, if we... Yeah?
When you, typical annexation for us?
Probably doesn't, I'm assuming isn't just one piece of property, residential property. It's generally gonna be a large acreage. And so this, this case is gonna be a very small portion of the overall fees and things associated with an annexation, right? It's gonna maybe, it's not like we're gonna go annex a half acre lot, just because they want to be in the city. And if so, you may pay the fees at the time anyways. More likely to go annex 200 acres, and in that, there might be a couple half acre parcels that have a house on it, right? So it's gonna be an exception number.
Or a business.
Right. It may have a commercial building on one, but majority of the land's gonna be annexed and it's probably gonna be farm land to begin with. So it's gonna be a rare case. Regardless of how it happens. I mean, it's gonna happen a mobile amount of time.
There's two of them. Not three blocks from here that someday are gonna happen?
But when you make that annexation, more likely it's gonna be 500 acres gonna get developed.
I understand that. But I've been around this town long enough to know, that if you annex 100 acres, and there's two half acre parcels that are an exception? This place is gonna be full that night, because they got treated different. All I want, I understand what Tom's saying, I don't have a problem with that. My concern is, when I read, I didn't see that. All I saw was that they were gonna pay connection fees. I want it very clear that we're gonna deal with the rest of the fees too.
Yeah, it's subsection H there, it's developed residential properties, we'll just do these in order. Page three of the ordinance.
I got it.
Redline. Which are developed, partially or fully developed with one or more residential dwellings, which are annexed to the city and are subject to required under the code to connect, or which requests to self-connect, shall pay the applicable fees and charges and otherwise comply with this chapter and Resolution 9924. And then it references the fees set forth in Title 17. So our goal is to try to use all of those tools to even it out, if you will, to make sure that they fully mitigate. But that we don't get stuck with a charge that we've over-mitigated.
Okay, okay, I got it, I'm not, I don't want to over-medicate. I guess what I would say is, that second sentence, we talked about Title 17? It's qualified, says in the event these properties subsequently apply for modification. Then the fees will apply.
I see.
I'm wondering if it shouldn't apply, get it over with. That's what's gonna happen to the rest of the guys when, in that 100 acres that are coming in.
So you're saying should apply upon annexation or completion of annexation?
I'm just proposing that.
Yeah, so this is, this is, this is chapter 17. And it's, chapter 17.16 deals with the, with all of the fees. But when you say, but under this chapter, we mean all of the fees.
I know, but I'm talking about the first part of the sentence. It says that it applies if the person wants to modify the property.
But then you get into a situation where you're not, you're not going on water, sewer, and storm possibly. If they're not modifying the property, then you're gonna get charged for all the others to begin with, but then they're not, they're not making the water connection, so that's deferred later too. So you might as well get out from all at one point, no?
That's what I'm saying, yeah, I want it at the front, not the back.
Well, then you're not giving them a deferral at all, as soon as they get annexed, they're gonna pay.
No, that part, no, because we're not giving the other guy deferral either.
The home would have existing water sewer and storm, or water sewer, so they're, they're gonna care.
But I'm not talking about water sewer, that's in the first sentence. The second sentence deals with all the rest of the fees.
But there's a situation when you collect all the rest of the fees and not water sewer and storm, because they don't make those connections.
No, there isn't.
If they're not connecting.
Yeah, that's true, I, that's true. But they're not impacting our system until they connect the water sewer and garbage. But they could be impacting our police department, they could be impacting our roads, they could be impacting our parks. So why are we... So why are we waiting on that?
Well, in the case of, and one thing, this is a good discussion, because maybe we can modify this bit. In the case that you're describing, where we're on the threshold of annexation, coming to want to annex. Typically we would do a development agreement pre-annexation, where we cover all of us. And maybe we need to say, unless otherwise provided in a pre-annexation development agreement, that would be our attempt to try to capture much of the possibility. Now, in the event we annex and somebody isn't executing the development agreement at that time, which we try to discourage, then we would have to fall back here and say, all the fees imposed into this chapter will be applied. The problem is that a lot of cases, LAFCO requires us to bring in annexations that include not just the applicants, but additional territory squared up, right? Cause property owners do this, and planners are like, sorry Ken, planners have nice square corners, right?
President's gonna be accepting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So there are properties that get annexed against their wishes. And if we say that as a matter of, in an ordinance, that they're gonna pay water sewer storm and everything else at the time of annexation, LAFCO's gonna have a hard time with that, as will, as will, we'll have a hard time annexing. Because part of the question and answer that we give them in annexes is, do I have to connect the city services today? No, you do not, as long as your services continue to function properly, you're okay. So I think, I'm leaning from your comments and things that I think we can fix in this, and we're willing to. And I don't think they're minor major fixed, I think we can get this introduced at least and tweak it a bit. And especially add language about a pre-annexation development agreement, being sort of the par down, the exception. That might, that might get us where we need to go on this.
Yeah, I, I don't have a problem with that, cause at least that way it's dealt with upfront. What I'm trying to avoid is, three years later, when a few of us aren't even here, and all of a sudden you're trying to explain something that somebody else says is okay. If there's an agreement put in place and it's five years later, the agreement will take care of it. And maybe that's what this ought to say, is it's either, it's if they're applied, or there's an agreement as to how it's gonna be handled. I can live with that.
So maybe we can change this, we're setting by ten, bringing back second, the adoption. I think staff is wanting to move forward with first reading tonight. We could bring back a couple of changes, would say unless access is otherwise provided in a pre-annexation development agreement, and then the policy of the council is they fully mitigate. And if that includes all the fees under the Title seventeen chapters, these chapters, then that's what they'll do. To the extent we can permit it by the law.
Yeah, at least there's conversation, and it's dealt with, and then it's brought to the council for consideration and approval.
We can make those changes.
Right, okay. Thank you. You want a motion?
Anybody else?
He bails?
Comments?
How moved are we, adopt the ordinance with the discussed changes to be worked in before second reading? Is that legal?
Yeah, what we're doing is we're waiving the first reading, and then reducing with the, with the language changes to be brought back at the second reading.
So moved.
Yeah, well, he's already.
I'm gonna nail.
He did it when you first started talking.
Say a word.
Okay, two B.
I want, can he be disconnected?
He is. He is, his computer's not. An ordinance for the city council, city river, temporarily suspending certain provisions of chapter nine point three two of Riverdine Municipal Code. Skateboard facilities, Kevin, sheen.
I got it.
Ken, Kai.
Mister Mayor, Honorable Counsel. Few months back in March, council directed us to do some research on some of the rules and ordinance at the skate park. We did meet, we met with the parents, we met amongst city staff and then did some research. Checked with several local cities, about eight or nine of the local cities. Saw what their ordinances and rules for their parks were. And the majority of them, actually six of the eight, have a similar or exact same ordinance in place as we do. Those are listed, however, most of them don't actively enforce the scooter element, which gives an appearance that scooters are okay in their parks. A couple of them that we did focus in on were Lathrop and Oakdale, who actually do allow the scooters in with skateboards and inline skates. Now twenty, twenty-five years ago, virtually no one was riding scooters. Inline skates were a little, you know, in vogue along with the skateboards. Now you almost never see inline skates, so it has evolved a little bit. But our main concern was the liability and the current ordinance in place. Oakdale actually received a grant, and as part of the grant, in order to receive the grant to build this, they had to be all inclusive, so. They said, the grant money was their determination for allowing it. Lathrop was similar, they actually have the same ordinance that we have, but they had enough interest in their community where they said, we're gonna try this. And our big question to both of those cities was, have you seen increased problems, increased liability? And although it's only been a couple of years, their answer was, no, we haven't. So staff came up with a recommendation that, you know, we give it a shot for a year, and Tom drafted it in ordinance. And that at any time, we can monitor and see how it's going, any time city staff could bring it back, city council could bring it back, or Tom also laid it out to where if nothing is done, it will become permanent after the year's time. So we can address it earlier, or we can wait, but either way, and then obviously, if you weren't comfortable with that, then you could leave the ordinance as is, but. In all of our meetings and in all of our research, I think we're comfortable, we are in a self-insured pool. You will take on a little more liability when you have extra people, extra devices, but it hasn't seemed to be a problem in some of the cities we've talked to. And so you have a report there, you have a recommendation, staff is happy to answer any questions you may have.
Leo?
I, I mean, I, from what I've read, I don't have a problem with what the ordinance does. My only change would be to take the word may out and put shall. That a year from now, we will look at this, so that everybody knows that they're not, this isn't just, we changed the policy, you guys will have a blast. That a year from now, we're gonna look at this and see if we still wanna do it. Other than that, give it a shot and see what happens.
Yeah, when I looked at this, I mean, it's one of those things that things evolve over time, and one day scooters will be out, something else will be, and we gotta kinda change along with the times. You're saying we'll take on more liability, I wanna agree with you, but on the other hand, they're not after scooters right now, so our liability's not gonna change. I don't think this is gonna open, I don't think when you open it up, you're gonna have a whole bunch more people that aren't there already doing it. You might, but I don't think so, so. I think it's a reasonable thing to do, let's give it a try, and we'll look at it in a year from now, and hopefully, hopefully it's clear to the scooter people out there that, you know, we expect them to be respectful of what the course is for, so that it continues, so we don't have to shut it down, hopefully, so.
Dean?
Well, and also, no, Dean's.
Yeah, you gotta hit your.
Get it, Dean, dude. My only question is, I've been around here a long time, and this conversation has came up multiple times, and I was always told that it was a liability factor, the insurance company wasn't gonna pay it, blah, 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 blah. It seems like all of a sudden now it's changed. Did we talk to our insurers and there isn't gonna be a problem now?
We did talk to them, they decided. It says that as you do this, you do take on additional liability, but that's what we do today, in a way, we always take on liability, and, you know, we did check with the other cities, and they did not see any additional claims that came in by having skateboards and scooters there.
But, you know, we've talked about this before.
And just to pick.
I mean, I don't have a problem with it, one I know that I thought we should have done a long time ago, but, but that's a good question. I'm not sure we take on any more liability, because they're already out there doing it.
Okay, so originally when we built the park, there were two bills on the assembly, you know, at the state legislature. One declaring skateboarding a hazardous activity, and another one declaring inline skating, and then, you know, we gotta post the rules. That was nineteen ninety-seven. Kevin and I looked up the more recent one, I believe it was, was it two thousand fifteen? There was an additional one to give us some indemnity or some limited liability. They added scooters to that, because you're absolutely right, Councilman Uger, in the past, we said, we're not comfortable, because we don't have those same protections under the legislature. And now it appears in the two thousand fifteen ruling, it has expanded to the scooters. And so in talking to the RMA and talking to the other ones, they're more comfortable than they were before two thousand fifteen.
I get you, good, good.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Jake?
So I'm happy to see that we're doing this, I think it's really good that, you know, we change as the times change, and that we show people that we are not so set rigid in our ways. And kids now, scooters are a big thing, especially young families, give them something to do, so, no, I'm happy that we did this.
Okay, so this is the first reading, any directors, anyone wanna move?
No, Dean, no, Dean, unless you say it out loud.
I'm giving you guys a chance.
I'll second it. Oh.
It's like a game.
Okay, what a bunch of, yes. Okay. Motion, yes. Okay, discussion items. Staff report on twenty eighteen nineteen budget.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a, you know, work on the budget now for some months. We have a two plan meeting, talking a little bit about the council, the council agreement, the discussion with the council. What do you think about the budget?
Tonight was talk a little bit about some of the staffing, and last time that we, last year, we talked about the agenda, that was a big topic of discussion, so. Just wanna kind of review where we ended up with staffing and some of the associated expenses that we see tracking very closely, especially related to retirement and healthcare, and then also talk about some of the council priorities in the budget. So before I get into some of that, I just wanted to review with you like I have done a couple of times this year, where we're tracking compared to last year as far as the general fund goes. So the light blue line is our general fund balance at the end of last year, as you recall, we ended up with about a one point two million dollar surplus. The dark blue line is where we're tracking this is through, through March. So obviously, it's tracking fairly closely. I look ahead towards the end of the year, my projections are showing more like nine hundred thousand dollars surplus, but that order might be too. So it should be a very similar year for the general fund as it was last year. This is just a graph showing the number of full-time employees between two thousand and eight to twenty eighteen. During the recession, or prior to the recession, we had ninety-three full-time employees, right now we have seventy-seven. For twenty eighteen, or right, it was the first time we added an employee, and that was a police officer that was approved by the city council. And that was part of the seventeen eighteen budget. The other change that was made as part of this most recent, the current budget, was the council approved the ability to go out and hire a private contractor to come and take over many of the landscape districts, and medians that we have throughout the city. As we discussed a couple meetings ago, that frees up about two full-time levels of public works guys to go do other jobs in the parks. So those are two of the most recent changes with employees. One of the recommendations that is in the twenty eighteen nineteen budget is to hire a part-time receptionist in the police department. This individual would be directing walk-ins to the appropriate staff, performing live scans, and doing other administrative functions. The cost of the general fund for this part-time position would be on the order of fifteen thousand dollars.
One five?
One five. Fifteen?
The other thing that we had done last year, and I updated the figures for your information, is we surveyed a number of cities and their staffing levels, and we compared them to Ripon. So the average of the cities surveyed are the dark blue lines on there, and then Ripon's average is the lighter blue line to the right. You can see we're very efficient, a lot of areas, and the thing I would point out is what gets a little hard with this sometimes is that some cities have different responsibilities, and how these are departments. An example is the engineering department, we, a lot of times, our own projects have to bid, and do our own construction management, and as much as we have the resources to do that. A lot of other cities do that by consults, so they have people overseeing consultants, they hire the consultants, and kind of manage the consults, so. Just an example of some of the differences that we go to.
Kevin, do me a favor, so, it says like for admin, the average, the average has point five two full-time staff, and we have point four four, is that what?
Yeah, that's full-time equivalents per one thousand residents, is how we measure all these.
Okay. So engineering, we theoretically have more, admin we have less.
Right.
Okay, I got it. Yeah, no, there are reasons where I get it, but I just wanna make sure the reasons right now.
Yeah, same with public works, you know, we do have more parks than per acre, or, you know, than a lot of cities do. But at the same time, we do provide garbage service, which a lot of cities contract out, so. Not always apples to apples, it's a curse and.
Plus you look at our parks compared to some other cities' parks.
Right.
Kevin, are these differences, and I know it's gonna depend on each particular FT, but are these differences, would they be considered statistically significant? Like, or are they just kind of like, you know, we look at point four four, point five two, but I guess I'm having a tough time analyzing, is that a huge gap? Or is that just as I'm reading, a minimal gap of zero weight?
I think most of them are probably minimal gaps, especially when you look at the cost per employee. I mean, the biggest difference between Ripon and other cities, probably, we talked about it a lot, is within the police department. And how many offices we have for a thousand residents. I would say that's probably the most statistically significant part of this.
Point eight A is average, you've probably got some man at point four, point six. You're the ones that don't go to calls. I'm curious, stop does go to a lot of calls.
Next, we've talked about this before, I'm not gonna go into it, but Ripon is unusual, it's the only city I know that has two different retirement plans. Our police department does receive a defined benefit plan, and the ALFRS plan will refer to it a lot of times. And all other employees receive a defined contribution, which we refer to a lot of times as a four oh one eight A plan. This is just an update, we've talked about this before, we have three different tiers, the top table is the defined benefit ALFRS. We have three tiers here, the tier one employees receive a benefit of three percent at fifty, we don't have many tier two employees. Most of our new employees are falling within the tier three category, which is two point seven percent at fifty-seven, it's a formula used. And so with some of the changes that we're seeing in ALFRS and their changes to their actual assumptions, obviously we've experienced significant increases, but you can see what our total cost is there for each of the different tiers. And I also broke it down in cost per employee, that's averages, there's differences in employee, that's average per employee. Below that is four oh one K, we have fifty-three employees within that benefit plan. They receive, every employee receives fifteen percent employer contribution. If they contribute a certain percent, up to six point six, we'll match half of whatever they contribute. So they have a chance of getting actually three point three on top of the fifteen percent.
And tier one's gonna go away, you're gonna get a lot more tier three, but of the thirteen, do we know what kind of? Well, not yet, I'd say here, but the age of the mess, that's gonna be more than the next ten years, those will probably mostly be off.
Yeah, it's interesting, just kinda updating slides year over year, definitely.
I have a question about the note under the top table. It says the employee is responsible for one point eight three percent of the employer's share. If the employer is responsible. If the employer is responsible for fifty-one percent, that means that we contribute fifty-one percent of the employee's salary to retirement, right?
Correct.
And the employee is responsible for two percent of that fifty percent?
Yes, two percent of that fifty percent.
Bless her name.
And it says nine percent of the employee's share. What's the employee's share?
Nine percent.
So they're paying...
I'm sorry. Employee's share is one nine percent. They pay all of that. Before the recession, the city paid the nine nine percent.
Okay, so really, it's about nine and a half percent is what they're paying and we're paying ninety percent.
Ten and a half.
All right, and we're paying ninety percent of the retirement. All right, well, no, we're paying ninety-nine percent of the fifty percent and none of the nine percent.
Exactly.
So the total amount of sixty percent, we're paying fifty-one percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm going to have to see the old plans. That's why many of them are...
So he's staying in trouble.
Bet.
Yeah, and then this, we've talked about this before too, last budget, but PERS has changed the discount rate from seven up to seven percent. So the blue line is what we were seeing projected as seven and a half percent with PERS' new projections, you can see what the seven percent does to us. In twenty nineteen, twenty, one of our unfunded liabilities fall off. We complete, we finished paying for it essentially, so that falls off. So that's why you see it go lower there, but then you see the increases after that. And that is the phasing end of the changes to this.
When did they drop to the seven percent? Was it?
It's here, first year.
So they dropped to like their, was it the calendar or fiscal year? Probably calendar year. Are they in the calendar year?
Yeah, I, sorry, I don't...
So they're also projecting to go lower there, aren't they? Are they going like a half a time?
Yeah, so they're phasing it in slowly over the next five years. So it's even going beyond this. The other large expense that we have here that we talked about related to employees is health and welfare benefits. Over the long term, if you look at it over the last seven years, we've seen, you know, close to twenty-five, probably close to twenty-four percent increase. You know, that's, my math may be a little off, but three to four percent a year increases in health and welfare. So I think compared to a lot of other entities, we've done pretty well in that. We've had to be creative of how we provide this benefit. I think the approach has always been provide the highest level benefit to the employees for as low as we can. So in line with that, one of the things we've done is we converted our Blue Shield employees from a gold plan to a silver plan. But obviously, by doing that, there was a higher deductible responsibility. The city agreed to pay that up. So I know we talked about it before, this is just an update on those numbers. The deductible savings that we look at is about two hundred thousand dollars a year. And as far as deductible reimbursements, you know, we're thirty-five to forty thousand dollars, highest is forty-five thousand dollars.
Again, I'm going to go back and say, when we made that decision back when you guys made it on the council was a brilliant change. Right there, you save one hundred and seventy-five thousand bucks a year.
Right.
Is that, is that, when we did that a few years back?
I should have given the credit.
What, is that included in that number? The city, let's go back to the one point two, the twelve oh four, and now it's fourteen eighty-nine. Does that include the payback that we're giving our employees when they're reimbursed?
Yes.
It does include that.
That definitely, yes.
So that was...
That's net amount.
Yeah. That's the total cost to the city.
Because otherwise, that number would be...
Well, had we not done what we did for calendar year two thousand and seventeen, it would have been one point seven, all of one point seven million.
One point seven million, exactly. So, well, maybe, it's over plan, the gold plan could have gone up more, so that would be a minimum.
Yeah, so strategically, it's been a great move.
Does the employee stay healthy?
Yeah, right.
The other thing that has been negotiated in the memorandum of understandings with the different unions by resolution for unrepresented is employees are beginning to pick up a percentage of their health and welfare. I think it was back to twenty fourteen, we essentially split premium increases with employees over a certain amount. So you can see over the years there on the very bottom what the employees are paying towards the premiums.
That's total.
That's total. Yeah. The other thing that I mentioned as we started this discussion is there's a number of policy, priorities of the city council that are included in the budget. These are the items that I could have in there right now. The Chamber of Commerce receives a donation of ninety-one hundred dollars. We have budgeted for staffing to assist with the Fourth of July, in our agreement with the Chamber to provide certain services. Same with the loss, and we provide certain support through that weekend that typically costs us, and the budget now is thirty-four thousand dollars. We do the maintenance of the, an upkeep of the senior center building, and we also provide staffing to operate that. That is for eighteen nineteen right now, budgeted at eighty-five thousand dollars. We provide the landscaping at the museum building and any maintenance that's needed there. It's a smaller requirement, but twelve hundred dollars for this upcoming budget. We do all the library, the building maintenance on the library, and then we also match a certain amount of operating expense to increase the hours that we have there. It's on the order of ninety-four thousand dollars. We provide Ripon prior district hazardous material fee, forty-five thousand. And then we share the operations of the aquatic center, and that's thirty thousand dollars that's currently budgeted.
Does that kind of add up?
It always varies. We pay half, so it's gone up. And also, some years, you know, things go, they break and...
Well, that's true when I put one because they reblast the pool.
Right, but this is just, this is no operation. They always have a problem or anything.
Yeah. So there's any other changes? Happy to take those and incorporate them as part of the budget, but that's what's in there right now.
Last question. These are general funding expenditures?
Yes.
If we, where do the fees that we collect for things like using, I don't know, well, especially the, where is it?
Well, these are not, are any...
So the community center separate from this?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no offsetting fees for any of these? Other than for the pool, they charge all of the fees they collect against it, we pay half of what's left.
The net, yes. I won't go over this a whole bunch, I know James talked about this at length at a meeting or two ago. The one thing I would just point out is we did add the community center parking lot, I think as we went to the strategic planning meeting. That was one of the priorities of the council. So staff right now is putting together a layout of that and in a cost estimate, I think I've already heard from at least a couple council members, they'd like to see that come back and look at some options with the cost or phasing and how we do that project any favor versus that's fault. So staff is working on that and we're bringing that back to the city council. The other one that's in process right now, with the question mark next to it, is the indoor soccer facility. Obviously, Mr. Minsley has donated two million dollars towards that. As the cost, once we're thinking about it, is quite a bit higher than that. I'm meeting with the contractor later this week, trying to come up with a project that's as much closer to that two million dollar donation. So those two projects are being added right now, but they are moving forward with the discussions with council. Some of the capital allocation studies, what we try to do in the budget is just have the items that are of normal maintenance, that require regular replacement. I've included those in here. As we get the surplus back at the end of the year, like we did the last couple of years, staff will bring back our overall list of all the capital needs that we have and along with at least a starting point of discussion of what that surplus should go to. But in here right now, we've included the LPR cameras. That was part of the discussion we had at the strategic planning meeting. That would be citywide. And based on our last discussion, I'm assuming that will come from the mitigation fund that we discussed, I'll bring it back with the resolution and the cost estimate analysis. There's two police cars that would be replaced as part of this budget, replacing five mesh cameras, seven computers.
Is that mesh system four?
Yes.
Kind of phased it out.
It's working. We're also going to be talking about some upgrades to the, you know, how they communicate.
What are those?
Two lawnmowers are being replaced. I believe it's an eleven-foot lawnmower and a push mower. Always surprising.
Forty grand for a lawn?
I think one of them...
What do I have, the push mower, my dad used to make me use?
Well, actually, what is this about?
You gotta start now, you take your son or...
We young guys don't even get it.
I ran the push mower before these days.
Oh, good.
The two other items, I think you'll hear more about these from the planning department as they move forward. Ag land mitigation study, this is something that is a requirement of LACO, we're going to have to figure out at some point, a process and an F B for that. And then the last one that's been discussed, it's in the budget, but it is going to come back to the council for more discussion, is the potential of adding industrial commercial property on Jackton Road. So it would be north of ninety, I'm sorry, south of ninety-nine, west of Jackton Road, across from Kenosha Trail and Tractor Supply.
So that'd be...
What?
Sorry.
That did not make sense to me.
No, it didn't. It is the property that is west of Jackton Road, across from Tractor Supply.
The houses.
So you're talking about the amenity on the west side of Jackton?
That's what he said.
That's not...
He said the side of Jackton Road.
The first time was a little...
Sounds like... You have me in the circle, then you turn me off.
The second time was much better than the first time.
No? I have a couple of questions. How, how many mesh cameras total need to be replaced?
Right now, we went through and we're doing five cameras a year. So I think there's a total of seventy?
Seventy?
Yeah, we did five last year, and then we have five again.
So...
Sixty more.
So it'd be a hundred fifty thousand dollars to a mall, right?
Yeah.
Ten thousand to five, ten hundred fifty?
Is that just the cameras or is that installation or?
And the same question about computers. How many of those need to be replaced?
I didn't...
Me did not want.
We have about a hundred that were done throughout the city hall, the department, all in locations. We should provide every four years to replace all, theoretically. Ideally, we've been doing it twenty-five years.
So it's about two hundred forty grand to a mall.
But the, what they're trying to do is get all these items on a normal...
No, I just want to get an idea of what we're talking about.
Yeah.
What type of mall design do you get when we purchase?
I know in some cities, it's some cities, but are they five percent, ten percent of the way?
So usually, when we're purchasing, if you have a tenant at a time, it's pretty minimal. So it's...
But are, are there any, I know like for office supply and stuff, there are bulk purchasing programs we can get where forty cities come together and each one of them buy five, all of a sudden buying two hundred fifty? Have we ever looked at something like that?
Most of it, well, all the vendors have used, quote, off of a couple of cooperative purchasing agreements and names in the stadium. But, yeah.
Dennis?
That's all I have.
Thank you.
I have any answering questions?
I have one, but it hasn't, it's not on any of those. One of the things that we talked about in our workshop were those, I don't know which one, mitigation funds that we were going to set up?
The policies for the different ones.
Right. You're going to bring them, throw those back for some, a little more discussion?
Yes. I'm going to take the input I got from the last meeting and incorporate those and bring them back in the June meeting. Also, bring the ball stuff public in June for the budget.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thanks, Kevin. Nice up the menu. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, all council members, the staff wants to update the city council on our current groundwater level conditions. Staff continues to monitor all our walls on a weekly basis. Our groundwater levels are continuing to rebound from the past drought conditions. For you is a graph showing, showing the changes in groundwater elevation. And as of this month, we are at the same level as we were back in two thousand and thirteen. So we've, we've kind of rebounded and at the same level as we were before the, before the drought.
So is this, these numbers represent the depth of the top of the water?
Static, static level. Yes. That's without, not pumping, just static water. So it's the best way to kind of monitor the condition.
So the lower the down, the smaller the number, because you don't have the oil you need to get up there.
Correct.
Well, I think that really shows that what we've done here in Ripon is really helped.
There's probably a lot of factors. River, the river's got water running through us, so...
No, I think it's the oil we need to get in.
Yeah, we'll take that for it. So it shows we're heading in the right direction and we're caught up. We continue to, we'll continue to monitor it. We're talking about water before you, also is a, is a table showing our water usage or water conservation percentages from two thousand and thirteen to present. Currently, last month, we were at thirty-seven percent reduction, which gives us a twelve month running average of twenty-three point six percent. So as the summer approaches, those numbers will probably go down, but we continue to monitor, continue to keep watching for water wasters. We've been really focusing on water leaks that our water meter software program shows us. So we're continuing to try to keep on top of this so we can keep these numbers stable. Be more happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I have one question. Because I read an article in the bulletin that talks about Manteca. Is there an adjustment in our base gallonage to accommodate growth? In other words, if we add a thousand homes, things are changed? Does that make sense?
There is when it comes to the reporting numbers that we report to the state. We monthly, we report our water usage and our water conservation to the state. In that calculation, there is a, the population is considered, and that's the gallons per day, per capita per day. These numbers are just our shared numbers that we use. So we have it included, that predicted, so you couldn't throw that in.
So this number, whether we add fifteen thousand people or twenty-five thousand people, the number you're comparing with versus how much the extra ten grand, ten thousand people we use? It's in there. I mean, it doesn't matter.
Correct. This is just the raw, the raw deal, the gallons, gallons pumped between the two.
Because the city of Manteca, they bounce back and forth between the two that they're talking about. One time they're talking about how much they save, and then the other one is... One time they're talking about how much they save, and then the other one is a qualified savings after it's adjusted for, and they're not consistent, and I, I just wanna be consistent, so we're always talking about the same thing.
Here, what I've been reporting is, is consistent.
Well, that's interesting, because I remember when we first started doing this, we were talking about, gosh, we need to keep annexing, if we have still stable certain dollars now, we'll penalize the people who are already living here. But they're making an adjustment, but they're making, you can make an adjustment to that with the state?
With, with the state, when the state came through and, and came up with the drought regulations, the reporting regulations, they, uh, they put a fancy formula in, in place. Uh, we, we reported to, we reported on our, our, uh, population, uh, to justify it, which, you know, calculates per, per gallon, per person, per day. Um, and that's, 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 that's their bottom, their bottom.
When you talk about hydroground, is that a matter of?
Exactly.
So if you, if you're throwing it in the population, we are, we're better than this.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, good, thanks Ted, appreciate it. Okay. Department head, we'll talk, we'll move on to chief, anything to report?
Mr. Mayor, honorable city councilors, just one quick update, uh, we're monitoring several different locations within the city limits regarding traffic. And I just wanna report on one specific area, that's West Ripon Road, uh, in the evening hours. Uh, we've assigned, uh, officers out there during specific times, uh, to monitor traffic and to enforce traffic violations. Uh, just in the past few weeks, uh, they've made fifty, over fifty-three traffic stops, issued forty-speed citations. This is the last couple of weeks. Um, further citations were issued for miscellaneous violations and a few warnings. Uh, probably the most outstanding, uh, astonishing, uh, that sits it, is that, uh, the fastest moving vehicle in the thirty-five mile an hour zone is sixty-seven.
Sixty.
Coming in from, that's on West Ripon between Highland and Moose Road. Um, so there are residential homes, the both sides of the streets are, so, uh, that was a top speed. Sorry? Um, and the other interesting fact is about sixty-five percent of them, uh, are reside outside of our city. That's all.
Interesting. Thank you.
Yeah, I have, I saw something this morning that I didn't, I hope I never see again. I was down there at that intersection at, where the Starbucks is going in, and I was getting ready to turn right. Two ladies were walking across from Angle Gas Station towards the waterfall area. They were halfway across the street. I'm gonna say some guy, although at the time I told somebody else I used a different word. It was sitting over on the other side of the road, wanted to turn left, he just left. He missed those women by a foot. And I mean, he didn't even, he was moving, cause I honestly thought he was gonna hit him. And then the lady that was parked next to me, I thought she was gonna scream her lungs out, cause I thought they were done. And he did, he just left that stop sign, sped through the intersection, and it was gone.
That's one of the locations we're gonna be monitoring in a couple, a couple days to weeks, and then I'll hopefully have some more data on that also.
It's getting, the, the way people are driving around here is getting ridiculous.
Well, chief, I'm glad you brought up about West Ripon Road, you know, I put on the agenda and we took that off to get more stats to figure out what to do on there, because I don't know most of you probably have, but if you go down Second Street at night, you can't even get on the ninety-nine. And they're in the back in the streets and roads, so we agreed to wait an extra month before we put it on to figure out the way to mitigate what's going on, so, thanks. Ted, anything else besides, kind of anything else besides? Mr. Shad, uh, Dan, anything to report?
Uh, yeah, just real quick, I did talk to Caltrans, their northbound on-ramp closure at Main Street is now, it's postponed until the first week of June, so, um, that's now, so the latest on that.
Now, let me ask you a question, how deep are they getting now, like a foot, and they're shutting down the entire lane because they need to have a truck that's a little too high?
Yeah, I'm not sure the tech engineers are there going for, but, uh, uh, yeah, but that's what they're gonna shut down lanes, just to gain some more clearance for, for normal traffic.
And you're shutting down the northbound on-ramp because they don't want anybody driving through there while they're building?
So that lane will be shut down, so squeeze down and then open up again after they get past a certain spot.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna probably do certain, I don't know if they're doing all three lanes, um, not. They're gonna, they'll, they'll probably just do one lane at a time, I'm, I'm assuming.
And then the other side, will the other side ever shut down or is that, is the clearance okay on the other side?
They told us they weren't working on this.
It's only, it's only the northbound side.
If you look at that bridge, if you look at the bridge, it's kinda-
Oh, it angles up?
Or the, the, you can see there's quite a bit of difference.
Probably the two trucks have been able to get in under it, or they haven't been able to get in under it. Makes a lot of sense, it's good to use some money.
You're gonna act always for it?
Yeah, I know, kid. Council, not in the board. Kevin, do you wanna ring out about West Ripon Ripon Road, or you got enough?
Um, yeah, I think that, uh, uh, Mayor Rusu should ask that staff bring some back, some officers will look at what the, what the traffic. Uh, really trying to mitigate the impacts our residents and residents and officers do that, so, um, we've been working on that, staff, uh, some officers, or, or these ideas with council.
It's a little complicated, I thought, so it'll be a longer.
Legal.
Dan?
Yeah, last week, we had the economic development meeting, Ken was there, um, we, last month, I guess the last month, we had the product approach with Fulton County, the systems up there, so that was productive. We're gonna have a meeting as usual, uh, everybody seemed to be happy, thrilled, the economic development meeting, I was going. There are lots of praise filed on Ken, so, uh, Chamber's very happy with Ken, as they should be. Um, other than that, as usual, thanks to the members of the public being here and joining the show.
And Jake?
It's about two weeks ago now? That we went out to Washington DC with the one voice trip with the county. I think it was two weeks ago. Hey? That's what I said, I think it was two weeks ago. Uh, Administrator Warner was there, uh, Councilor DeGrasse was there, uh, Mayor Rusu was there, it was very, very insightful to go back and do, uh, pick their brains when it comes to water, when it comes to financing, when it comes to grants, when it comes to economic development, so all in all, it was a very productive trip.
Mr. Uker? Excellent. Vice Mayor Zuber?
Uh, one spent yesterday morning riding a train from Stockton to Sacramento back, and, uh, it was the first, there is now a train that runs from Fresno to Sacramento in the morning, so we can get to Sacramento before eight o'clock. Six thirty in Stockton, four thirty in Fresno. Um, and then there are two trains coming back, one leaves at noon and one leaves at five thirty, so you literally can get to Sacramento, do your meeting or whatever you are, and then come back, and, uh, it's pretty, it's pretty impressive. Uh, there were people on that train that had been wanting this for a long time, that, from, uh, in the valley, go to Sacramento.
Is that a D H train?
No, it's a Amtrak train. Um, the rest of that's coming later, so anyway, think about it. Number two, if you haven't been to the recycling center in the last couple of days, it looks different, not, not the mess by the cardboard, you have to look at the other corner. And they're finally getting things, uh, squared away to put the new compactor in, and, uh, hopefully by, what is it, first part of June, it'll all be done, and we'll be going there.
Incentive, incentive on all?
Yeah.
Really?
The compactor part will be done, so that we can, the cardboard and then the rest of them done.
I go to it twice a week, so.
Yep, that's it.
Thank you. And I have nothing to report. Is that it? Anything, Chuck?